Welcome to the Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience Monthly Groundwork Session. Thank you for coming. This month, we'll be digging deeper into Module 11, Good to Great. Think of these groundwork sessions as our small group work session. If we could be together in person, you'd know those assembled here as colleagues who bring their knowledge and passion for learning to share and challenge each other. This group gathers to collaborate, share best practices, and challenge each other to not only improve how we deliver the seed material, but also to challenge the seed material itself to improve. We'll begin with a prayer, and then we'll get our hands in the mud and know that this work will bear great fruit in the lives of our students and ourselves. We'll begin in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Come, Holy Spirit, come. God of mercy, we offer you our gratitude, and most especially, we offer you this time together as an offering of our love and our joy that you have blessed us with the resources to share entrepreneurship and co-creation with you, with young people all over the world. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you especially for hearing our prayers. We thank you for our lives, our families, our colleagues, our work. We thank you for loving us and for sending your son to redeem and save us, Father. We ask for your forgiveness. We ask for your blessing. We ask for peace and joy. And especially, we ask for peace on the Burgess family, and especially Ida Burgess and her soul as she goes to join you in the great hereafter. Father, we are humbled that we know you through your work, and we hope to do the will and the work that you have given us today. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb. Jesus, Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. Saint Monica, pray for us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. So yeah, our thoughts and prayers are with the Burgess family, and we miss you, Luke, but we know you are with your family tonight. And so we'll get started. Just a couple of rules. Want to make sure we cover these. Number one, have fun. And we can tell you're having fun because you're curious and asking questions. So please ask questions. In fact, you'll see in Module 11, there's a lot of question asking that builds on all of the question asking that happens in Module 10, which is really cool. We love inquiry here. We love dialogue, dialogos, two people seeking the truth in Latin. So be curious, ask questions. And then I think it's absolutely important that you suspend your disbelief. That's a hard thing to do. We give it away to Hollywood. We do it all the time in the movie theater. But when it comes to education, when it comes to reading and learning and collaborating together, we tend to hang on to our disbelief. We tend to judge a little bit too quickly, if you ask me. And so let's 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 let go and see if we can collaborate. So this is a collaborative effort. Collaborative effort. We need your help. So just a couple of announcements, right? One, dual enrollment is obviously an option for everybody if they if they have been through the training. So if you're interested in learning more about that, please let us know. Those of you that are this far in the process, you know that we made a slight change in the way that we do the pre-test for those students that are not seeking dual enrollment or just generally in the beginning. So there's a new link for that, and that's all updated in the Module Zero and Module One Lesson Guides. And then would love to get and start kind of building the habit of collecting testimonials from students who have been through the program, whether they go through the whole thing and seek dual enrollment or whether they just have an encounter with it, if you do like a module or even a project. And of course, if you're interested in learning more ways to deliver seed, please let me know. I'd love to spend time with anybody talking about how we do that. But that testimonial helps us to not only know how effective it is and the impact that it's having on the students, but it also helps us to tell those stories to the generous donors that support this program. Thank you all very much. And so got a little bit of bad news, but essentially, got to let you know, we were going to try to host the Seed Summer Academy this summer at Catholic University of America. We've decided to not pursue that opportunity, and it is officially canceled. We have reasons. One is we think that there are other alternatives, right? There are other ways to do this, to have have students be hosted on campus and have an experience, an encounter. We think there are better ways to do that, and we're working on that in the background. So we'll let you know what we come up with. The good news is that the Seed Facilitator Conference is very much still planned. It'll be happening in July, from July 11th to the 14th in 2022, on campus at the Catholic University of America. We'll let you know very soon. We've got a block of rooms coming out and where what all the agenda is going to be. So mark your calendars. And we are gonna we're have a little bit of a price for that. So $500 does not include transportation or lodging, but it will cover all of your meals and all of the program while we're there, which will include some touring in the great city of Washington, DC. So there's that. And then if you've been with us the last handful of groundwork sessions, we've made an amazing change, at least in my opinion, it's amazing. We have added the guidance and wisdom of Kiran Roach, who is part of the CEOC Center. He's actually at the Bush School of Business in Tucson, working on the Tucson Project out there. And he has two master's degrees in education from Notre Dame, which is fantastic, and always has this really great perspective. And I I've been telling everybody, Kiran, you know, the value that you bring is that, you know, I I dropped out of education school, right? Like, I'm an education school dropout and went and just got my BA in music. So I'm a little bit versed in this old pedagogy thing. And I've spent the last 10, 11 years of my life hanging out with teachers a lot. So I've heard some of these things, but you consistently bring so much value in terms of like understanding what's going on in the seed material. So thank you for that. Thank you for joining us. So the way we've been doing it is I'll talk a little bit about the content, and then I'll hand it over to Kiran, and he'll talk about pedagogy and instruction, which is fantastic. So we'll do that, and we'll go through block by block till we finish the module. And we want to cover at least enough, like these groundwork sessions, we don't want to just do everything that is in the module itself. We want to kind of leave some of that, or we'll come back and we'll continue to do professional development. But we're going to go through quite a bit. So you'll see. So here we go. Right off the bat, wanted to share that it, well, I wanted to ask, actually, right? When was the first time, Rick or Kiran, that you encountered any of Jim Collins's work?
For me, it's hard to it's hard to remember that far back. So it's got to it's got to be
It's been a bit.
Well, over a decade, I would think.
Yeah. And and was that, you know, obviously, probably through the course of your work? But I wonder, you know, back then, and it sounds like maybe still you're you're still like putting his concepts and philosophies to work?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I think I think I went to a seminar and I read Good to Great. And I mean, when was that published? So it's been it's been a long time, right?
I can look. Hang on.
Like 15 years ago, I'm guessing.
At least.
I read it. Cause I I read it when it came out. So it's been it's been a long time.
What is the date on this? 2005, James C. Collins. So yeah, it's been a bit. What about you, Kiran? Are you are you?
Yeah, I was actually texting at my leadership program to read with that. And I do remember actually being on accreditation team at a school in town, and it was a good school. And I actually posed a question to them. It's obviously you're a good school, but how can you become a great school? And they actually ran away from that response. They they did not like that. It was funny. Some people didn't want to didn't want to be challenged for it. It was
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, that man, I guess I'm a little shocked. Hang on a sec. Let me gather my thoughts here. I was looking at some of the early edits as we were prepping for this call. Like, there was the concept between, what is it, good enough or well enough, right? But either way, not enough, right? I think it's been a challenge. Like, for me, I encountered Good to Great, and then the little the little accompaniment piece, the little 35-page one about Good to Great for the social sector, so for nonprofits, and how to use concepts that Good to Great is covering, especially in managing a social enterprise. And I think I would honestly say 2010, and was part of my leadership program that I went through. And we also, we read it as part of the battery there. And the hedgehog principle, I've held on to that ever since then, right? Like, when I think about myself, my vocation, who I am inside of the marketplace, I try to find, like, it was very self, it was a bunch of self-knowledge at once, right? This is me, and this is what I have to offer. And I try to remember that every single time, but it also reminds me that my niche is very niche, right? It's very small. And so the customers that are willing to pay me for what I'm able to bring to the marketplace, for my hedgehog, they are few and far between. So I need to be very nice to them. Thanks so much to all of the people that have let me be in my hedgehog. So, cool. That, I guess I wanted to point that out because it has been around a while. And I think one of the biggest challenges with this module is that, well, just with generally with culture, especially, you know, with the internet, I always try to remember, like, the iPad came out in 2007. That doesn't seem that long ago, but the advent of the smartphone and the smart device, fundamentally, and I think you'll agree with me, fundamentally changed our culture, and we will never go back to the way things were, right? Like, it was one of those moments, boom. Our culture has now changed, the way we communicate has changed, the way we educate has changed. And so when when we think about, you know, Good to Great coming out in 2005, two years before the iPad, there's kind of, this is where the culmination of all that knowledge happened to create Good to Great, because Jim Collins had been doing his work for decades, and Good to Great is just like the manifesto, you might say. So I always like to place that in the timeline, just for context's sake, right? And I know, Rick, that when we were going through with your training, I know that you had some really great points about like the case study, or when we, I guess not the case study so much as the Greg Popovich piece about the San Antonio Spurs and the culture, totally get that. And I think that one of the one of the impetus drivers for this kind of event, these groundwork sessions, is for us to kind of come together and think about, okay, well, what can we replace this with, or what are alternatives that we can have? So that's that's one of the things I hope to get from you all. But there is, in the Lesson Guide, there's a link to a summary of the entire book, and it's fantastic. In fact, let me share it real quick, and we'll come back to it. But like, the Yeah, hang on. Look at this. This is the article that pops up. You're seeing that? Can you can I get an audio? Like, you guys are seeing the this Good to Great graphic representation? Like, this is just one of the gems that's in here, right? And one of the other concepts that was not covered in the seed program in Module 11 is this flywheel concept. So Jim Collins also talks about flywheels and how they drive businesses. And I've never seen this done so well to take all of his ideas and put them together in a nice little graphic organizer or infographic. But this summary that is linked in the Lesson Guide, it's extremely helpful. It even has a little video here. And you don't have to show this to your students. I mean, that's totally your choice. But for me, this is when I'm prepping for an event like this, or for when I'm going to do Module 11 with students, this is something that will jog my memory, that will help me to visualize what's happening and how to connect it to the students, right? Because they're always looking for context for the content. All right? So in particular, Module 11, just like all the other modules of the seed program, it has a project, because we are doing project-based learning. So the module project is where I like to start, because that's the deliverable, right? So in the student prompt, which is another document that's available. All right, let's see. Here we go. I turn my share off because goodness gracious. So, okay. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. So the in the in the kind of document set that comes with Module 11 and every module, there's a student prompt, right? So what's in the student prompt is a little bit of information about what they're going to do for the project, which in this particular case, they're going to come up with and express their rules for life, right? And it hearkens back for them to their M code, and also their growing in virtue plan for Module Five, because we want those things to come together in terms of the rules for life. I mean, it makes sense, right? And in fact, the rules for life are not only what you will do, but I think it's important to include what you won't do. And I don't know if, you know, one of the things that I geek out on, I don't know if you know this about me, but I geek out on artificial intelligence. It's just something I'm very curious about, and I think there's a lot of similarities by how between how you train an AI and how you learn something with a human brain. And one of the things that's important for training in AI is what does no look like? What are we not looking for, right? Because in fact, that's how you start. And if you think about raising children, I mean, the first word that they learn is probably no. Or at least an important word throughout their childhood, throughout anyone's childhood is what is no? Where is no? So when we talk about our rules for life in this particular module project, we want to reinforce to students that it's not only what they will do, what their rules are, or it has to include what they won't do. And maybe I'm thinking about it backwards, right? Maybe your average high school student will begin with rules. If we're going to make up rules, maybe it's things that I won't do, but I don't know. There, we'll have to wait and see what the student's reaction is. Now, in there are a couple of guidelines, right, suggestions, right? The there's like Craig Ballantyne's samples, the Ten Commandments is given as a reference, Gretchen Rubin's Habit Manifesto, which again, this idea of habit forming, that always reminds me of growing in virtue. And then any other resources that you want to provide. And it says in there, as they prepare to write these rules, they should reflect on their core motivations, back to their M code. It's interesting, as we were just kind of waiting for everybody to join on the call today, Kiran and I got to talking about M code, because naturally, that's kind of how we think about our work, and certainly a central point in how we discuss things. Now, as far as the project goes itself, it's up to you how many rules. It says in the Lesson Guide for them to create one to three rules based on each core motivation. And then originally, we had kind of tossed around this number 12, like your 12 rules for life. That just sounded nice. That might sound like a lot. That might sound like too few. But I like the idea of, you know, you don't have to incorporate it for each core motivation from your M code, but it's a good way to start. So the deliverable then can look a lot of different ways. You could have them make a poster. You could have them make a video. You could have them draw an infographic, maybe. Kind of up to you, but like, this is a great opportunity for you to access the different styles of learning and different talents that are available in your classroom. Like, if we don't tap into their brains, then we're leaving a lot of value on the table. Like, I even think about it as dead capital. If knowledge is capital, if we don't allow the students to pull from what they already own, then we're missing out on a whole bunch of investable resources. So with that, I think that's a great way to hand it over to my buddy Kiran to talk about the what's in there with the pedagogy and the instruction.
Great. Thank you, John. So I'm just going to share quickly in the screen just the module itself. So for you to reference there. So here's that lesson plan laid out, and you can see it's for you as instructor, whether you're a classroom teacher or a home parent teaching a child or a group of children. You come here and look at this standard template that are in all our modules, and you can see the links throughout this embedded Google Doc for that. That leads to these block sections in the way that we've chunked out each of the sections of work. And so what John was just referencing to was this overview, good place to start, read, look over, and then this project instruction. So each module has a project. So in terms of education, you can envision that the project is for each module or the projects even without, all the way through the module, the activities are what in education speak, we would call formative assessments. These are forming you to see how students are doing with that. Whereas back to the larger part is where the students throughout do the Odyssey Project and other summative assessments for that. And so wanted to spend some time bringing this back up, this idea of formative and summative assessments, to have that mindset as you go in. And I'm going to put in the chat, be available, this link that's been shared a few times, but it's very good in the way of understanding the difference between a formative and a summative assessment. And one thing that I would like for instructors on the course to think about, and for homeschool teachers, is something new is a way of how, if you are using seed as a grading and a classroom grade for a student to I my recommendation, just my experience of teaching, and it is come from more of an elementary background, is that the formative assessment should be at least 60% of the overall weighting of the grade for that. And I like to use that mark as a student in the formative assessment, are things that they should be able to just do and do and do and do well. And you can get that way if a student is turning up to class, doing all the work, they've got 60% of their grade, they are not failing this class they're going in. And then that summative assessment is where that that last 40% of the grade, if you're on a letter grading system or a grade point scale, is where you can use that to distinguish between a 4.0 differences, 4.0, 3.0 with that, or an A, B, C, D grade. And that's where you would use the Odyssey Project and other summative assessments in the way of more the performance-based part of the grade. But all students, if they're turning up, doing the work through those formative assessments, should be getting passing grades for these courses. And that's just my belief as an educator, that students turn up, do the work, getting rewarded for that.
Thanks, Kiran. Always helpful. In fact, I was having a conversation today. We're just a little little bit of a inside baseball for you about what's coming next with seed. We are launching a project to make a fully self-directed version of seed for a homeschool student or a student that has the ability to have an individual independent study perhaps, or maybe in an ID classroom, that's a mixed scenario, right? So and we're talking very much about adding and how much we need to add more assessment into the seed program. So that'll be coming, because when it comes for the self-directed version, it will be coming for the the classroom version as well. So that's exciting news, just a little bit of inside baseball for everybody. And so moving down into Block One, talks about level five leadership, right? And so this is one of the things that I really love about the summary, is let's go back, and I just want to share this really quickly. It has this really cool pyramid. I mean, pyramid, you know, a great way to visualize some some structure, right? A hierarchy perhaps, or, you know, just a way to like imagine those hierarchy of needs is normally displayed as a pyramid, the seven forms of capital. We typically see them as a pyramid with with culture being at the bottom, because it permeates everything. So in this case, what I noticed about this this pyramid right away is that at the very, very bottom, like, just to get into the door, you've got to have a highly capable individual, right? And everybody above them is still, whatever level you're at, right? Because we're talking about level five leadership, whatever level you're at, you have that. Then you have level two. If you're level three, you've got three, two, and one, and so on. And so never forget that, and I always complicate this way too much. What what is really going on with level five leadership is right here, right? The it says, finally, we reach level five. They have the abilities of the other four, but they have this unique combination of will and humility, right? Will and humility. And actually, in the lesson plan, and let's go over here, it actually talks about that you want students to have, you want to have a discussion, right? That about what it means to be level five, or what is good to great, right? So you can you can talk more about this. You can have really, essentially, what we're talking about here is culture, and what is the culture that makes for good? What is the culture that makes for great? And I think the pyramid is a great way to talk about that. And then you can use the Greg Popovich profile, right? And what that also, what I see in that is particularly that they were intentional about creating a culture in their organization, right? And then here we see the will, willingness to coach a team that was bad, right? So the will, the professional will to go on and do that. And then attitude of resilience, even after losses. And then, you know, what we're talking about is their character, and particularly, we're talking about humility. And so let me stop my share here really quick and pause, just in case that rings a bell for anybody. But when we talk about the the Popovich profile, it dates back as well. The video that is in the San Antonio's tribute video is was actually uploaded to YouTube in 2014, right? So that's inside of our module, we're using a video to talk about a thing that happened in the past. That's from 2014. So just kind of, and it might might be helpful pedagogically. I don't know, Kiran, help me out here, but it might be helpful to give students some kind of context around what else was going on in the world. You know, you might find that's soon enough or more recent enough that they're probably not the year that they were born, but not far from it, right? If someone was born in 2014, they'd be seven during the at the time of recording. So there's this this profile of Greg Popovich that is is really good, right? And it's it's about enduring greatness is what it's titled as. And so you want to have students have an encounter with that, right? And then there's also a link to the video about that that's actually in the playlist, the Module 11 playlist on our YouTube channel. So if you're ever looking to find those resources quick and easy, you can do that on our YouTube channel. But I was curious, like, I know, Rick, that we had talked a little bit about it. Any other Good to Great people that come to mind that maybe we could add to the list or kind of grow as a potential option here that anybody come to mind?
Not off the top of my head. I do recall, in terms of a resource that we had talked about, created for greatness by Havard, as a book that speaks to the humility and the magnanimity as the as the virtues of leaders. But in terms of specific people, just off the top of my head, nothing comes to mind. Okay.
Anybody come to mind for you, Kiran?
Otherwise, I really like when there's opportunities like this to bring in that localized content with that. So I could see myself here bringing, we have a local business leader, Jim Cleek, who, one is known as just a great business car dealer owner in the in the community, but he's gone from good to great in what he's given back, and everyone knows that about him in the community. And so for the students to be really able to identify with something that's localized or known is something really great. And also, too, even better, if this person actually looks like the students in the class that you're teaching. So they're reflective of the community. So they see themselves potentially in this person, too, is always a great way. So if you're serving a predominantly Hispanic community, grab a Hispanic. If you're serving an African-American community, great to do that, too, just to see the champions that we're emulating, being reflective of who's actually in the seat and who's listening to or taking part in seed.
Yeah, I would I would echo that. I've had, so far, I've had two guest entrepreneurs, and I have them for different, in terms, in different modules, I've had them come in, and the kids really seem to like that.
I love, well, first of all, Kiran, you know, I love it when you bring you you bring it right back to like pedagogy and instruction, right? So, hey, if you don't like this, here's another way to think about accomplishing the same goal. And I can guarantee you that if you're if you're trying to be the like the purest delivery of seed so that your kids can get dual credit, you're trying to follow all the rules for that, that would be a wonderful substitution to make, honestly. Like, bring somebody in from the outside. We love that. We do it all the time at Catholic University of America with the 118 students. And so that's that's a wonderful, wonderful way to think about it. So then, I guess, yeah, I mean, I don't really, I think that's great. The first person that came to my mind, and I know this is maybe a little bit, I don't know, charged, but I think about, and I can't get it out of my head, I think about Henry Ford, right? I mean, Wartsonall, he was a human being, right? He lived in a time, he did a thing, but like, we owe him our five-day work week. You know, from a culture point of view, he was like, you know, paying people more than I've ever, than anybody has ever been paid to make these cars, but they don't have any time to spend it, right? And and if they're Christian, then they're actually going to church on Sunday and intentionally not spending money because they want to observe the, you know, the rules. So he's like, well, I need to give them Saturday off so that they can go spend this money and drive around in these cars, because otherwise, they're in, they're at work, right? And they never drive around, they never buy the car, because they can't drive around, they can't spend all this money on paying them. That's literally what happened. So, I mean, again, Wartsonall, Henry Ford, interesting dude, but that's thinking about, maybe that's magnanimous, maybe that's greedy. I don't know. Maybe that maybe that'd be a good debate to have with your students. So so that's fun. So that's Block One, Element One, where we're talking about what is good to great? What does this mean? Why is it important? I think that's that's a good thing for discussion. And of course, there's some prompts in the Lesson Guide for you. And then we move into Element Two, and this is where they actually get to create a little bit, right? So we kind of, we encountered this concept that was introduced, or at least, you know, famously introduced by a guy named Jim Rohn. So it might be good to talk about who that is in your class, to give him some context about that as well. But he said that we become the average of our five closest friends. And there is a link there in the Lesson Guide that you can pull up this article, right? It's you are the average of the five people you spend the most time with, right? And talks a little bit about Jim Rohn, and then this person who the author gives kind of their, I love it because it's his um, I love it because it's historical, it's a timeline of how it changed over the years, right? Um, so that might be fun to share, but I think when I think about it, like in prepping for this call, I thought, you know, who, who are my role models? What the lesson guide asks the students to do is to sit down and and journal and provide them with either pen and paper, give them a journal and ask them the the following two topics. Um, you know, it start out as Jim Jack Kerouac, right? Stream, total stream of consciousness, writing, and then go from through their ideas, mark the most salient points uh and summarize in a paragraph or two, who is your role model, right? What are the three, what are three ways they display personal humility and professional will? And then who is your anti role model, which, you know, the the role models thing, being an adult, a forty-three-year-old man, who are my role models now? Obviously, they're very different from when I was younger. And I think that that's what the author of the article that's linked in there is talking about. But, you know, it was, it was a fun exercise to go through and like pick my five role models, the people that I spend the most with. It's probably a good thing that my wife is on that list, you know? I I think that that's good, and I didn't do that totally on purpose. It's like I spend a lot of time with her. Um, and I find that she thrives. So when I wrote down about like personal or personal humility and professional will, Andrea, my wife, thrives in challenging situations because she doesn't see them as challenging. And what I mean is like when the six-month-old, I guess five-month-old at the time is, you know, not wanting to go to bed and has eaten plenty and just wailing in her ear, my wife is just right there, you know? And to me, that's torture. Like, that's one of the hardest, most gut-wrenching things that a human being goes through is listening to their child and trying to comfort them. But Andrea was totally sanguine and she just is doing her mom thing, right? And it's beautiful because she's living her vocation. But um, I I asked her, like, how is it that you, you know, how do you handle that? She doesn't think of it as a challenge. She just thinks of it as something that she does, and it's probably because it happens all the time. So she's in my top five. And then when it talks about your anti-role model, this, this actually is a real thing for me. And I've seen it among some of my other, my other friends, they'll have a name for their arch, their, their, their selves, which is their bizarro self, right? Like, all the comic book fans, all you Superman fans out there, you know who bizarro Superman is. Um, in my life, I have this person, his name is Johnny Beast. And Johnny Beast, me, right? But Johnny Beast is, it's justice. Johnny Beast is the enforcer. Johnny Beast really cares about the rules and stopping people from breaking the rules. And we're not talking about breaking like laws. This is the Johnny Beast is there to enforce communication rules and grammar rules and social etiquette. And and Johnny Beast is very quick to shut people down, like hit him with the hammer of truth so that they go away. And that is a terrible person to be, right? That's my anti-role model. It's actually myself. And he normally comes around when he's tired, when he hasn't slept well, when he hasn't eaten well, and maybe when he's had a little bit too much uh social lubrication, if you know what I mean, right? So we try to avoid Johnny Beast, and I think as I get older, he's getting more tired, right? Like, he just, he's starting to gain some wisdom and see, and I think that this is part of the exercise, right? We want them to keep an eye on who their role models are, like who they're, like, I think Luke would say who they're um emulating, who their models are, who they're wanting to be, and then who do you want to not be? Like, don't, whatever you do, don't be that guy. So that's what the anti-role model is about here. And we want the students to kind of like float their way into it by journaling and thinking about what it means for good, from, from, to be good to great. With that, a little help from our pedagogy and instruction leader.
So as we're going in now to, and I'll share the screen into block, into the blocks, draw your attention to um, what we use in education, if you might be uh pulling out some of these blocks to use as lessons. And this is where you might be thinking what objective or you want to achieve in this lesson. And that's where we really rely heavily on these, what we call Bloom's taxonomy, these ways of um identifying um objectives and what students should be able to do in the class. And you'll notice here in these earlier blocks that there are these lower-level Bloom words. And you've got them here, and they're more verbs that explain. Um, and then uh tell here as we go into element two with that. So these lower-level brooms are a great way to bring and start these topics um and these lessons in order to make it accessible. And then you grow um into the higher-level uh references. And this is where you get to the the how and that, but always, always growing and starting on the lower, lower level, making it accessible to students first. And so I'll put in the chat the link to the the Bloom's taxonomy and you can see those. And so you can look at that pyramid that pulls out those level-level objectives first. Really take time of pulling that out, making sure students can do those lower levels before you jump into the higher levels. And it could be easily simply through a, a discussion with that, but still always scaffolding that discussion, starting low with the explain, retell, things like that, before you get to the compare and contrast, which are higher-level in Bloom's for that. And then you can use leverage different things like here, the five closest friends, it's a, what we call a um a Venn diagram. And so I'm going to put this here also, uh, resources that have been shared a couple of times. But those Venn diagrams scaffolds that you can use throughout the uh lesson in order to help with the student. And this is where I'm modeling example or giving that, giving examples through that. And also to um, sometimes we use the term um activating prior knowledge. So being able to have them draw from prior knowledge, just so people that are close to them as opposed to going straight into an activity that might have them thinking of someone they don't know too much about. If you can activate that prior knowledge and is where that connection back to the M code is done through in these later modules intentionally designed where you're bringing back these lessons that you did earlier that can reinforce some of this here is that activating this prior knowledge that they, you know, you've given in earlier modules. So leverage that and you can use that as a starting point. And sometimes students need that help to um a- a- activate their brains again to to reengage. And so having no, that queue back to a class that's not repeating, but it's, 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 it's circling back, spiraling that curriculum back to things that you've done in the past for that. So all good teacher practices um and things to do as well as, and I'll put this last one here, um multiple intelligences, different ways of teaching that same concept. So we've had here video, discussion, writing. So we've got audio, visual, listening, different ways that you're engaging the student. Because uh some students learn in different styles with that. And so you want to just not be only attentive to those who are linguistic writing strong, but also those that would maybe prefer to act out or or do something that as a way of being able to show how they've learned that concept um and and shown how they've understood um and carried on learning from that. Back to you, John.
Always, always wonderful, right? All, I mean, I think to me, like, you know, it's, it's always just a great reminder and and learning. So this idea of uh, you know, accessing prior knowledge, learning to me is mostly not forgetting, right? Like, that's what it means to learn something is that you can remember it, recall the knowledge, the information at the time that is applicable and, you know, to make the thing happen, right, to to move forward in life. And so you sharing consistently about the, the, all of these concepts that just are like really just solid pedagogy is helping me to remember these things. So thank you, Kieran. Um, before we move on to block two, just want to check in, Rick, any thoughts that you'd like to add? Any, any uh thing come to mind, get triggered at all with any of this?
Um, I I like the exercise um related to the rules that we did. Um, part of what I'm asking the entrepreneurs when they come is to articulate, you know, so- something similar like lessons. What are the, what are the three things that, you know, you've learned that you would, you know, as advice, that, you know, trying to get them to um contribute to building the knowledge base of these different people have these different rules. And I'm sure a lot of them will overlap. So um, yeah, I think that's a, that's a good piece for the kids to um, you know, to to learn from. And I think I also like how um adding, having repetitive content on similar things, the M code, the, the virtues, the, the rules, you know, all those different things are different ways of looking at the same thing uh in a certain way, so that the, the student can see what resonates with them and it sticks with them. So I like how it comes back and forth uh throughout the modules to the different concepts. And they can kind of pick and choose what, you know, they can absorb themselves or is most meaningful to them.
That sounds like it's going pretty well for you then in the classroom, Rick. That's great. Awesome. And also that reminds me of the Tim Ferriss model, right? Where every podcast at the end, whoever he's got on, he has the four questions that he asked them. So that's stick to that, right? And the students will, that you're, you're like, what are three things? What are your three pieces of advice or rules or whatever? Your students will recognize the patterns, like if they overlap, then hallelujah. Because that's just one more rep of someone validating not only that it's important that you ask those questions, but that, you know, if two or more people have the same one, then maybe that's a good one to have, whatever that is, that rule. That's fantastic, Rick. Um, very, very cool. So moving in to block two of module eleven, we have this idea of confronting brutal facts. The essential question is what are the brutal facts that you need to confront? This sounds like a, like a Monday morning conversation for every single human being, right? Like, what, what is it that you need to face today? And in there, in the lesson guide, there are tons of resources as usual, right? We've got a wonderful video of Jim Collins explaining the Stockdale paradox. You can find that on our YouTube channel, but you can, that it actually, it's really cool. He released this explainer video of the, of the Stockdale paradox right after the beginning of the pandemic. I I think it might have been a response to the pandemic that he kind of upped his game and started creating a bunch of new content around those tried and true methodologies that he's come up with in good to great in order to help people kind of move through. I mean, he, the first thing out of his mouth is basically in these uncertain times, right? And I think we've all moved on from that verbology or that, that, you know, the way to refer to it. But uh, the rest of the video is fantastic. He talks about the Stockdale paradox and the story behind the Stockdale paradox. So I would think maybe if you're looking for a profile, you know, you want to put kids in touch with real human beings that have had real experiences that lead to this kind of wisdom. The story of the Stockdale paradox is very, very powerful. Um, and it hearkens back to obviously a time way before uh our lives. I think right now we're, we're closer to, uh, anyway, I I won't do the, the history math. But but the experience of of Jim Stockdale going through what he did in Vietnam uh is is kind of, uh, it hearkens back. But it it goes to this idea that, that you have this unwavering faith in the, uh, in the face of the uncertainty of the world, right? This idea that we've, we've got to move forward. And I think I've quoted Jim Morrison before on these videos where he says, the future is uncertain and the end is always near. I was a big Doors fan in uh, in high school. I never really got into Led Zeppelin. I was more into the Doors. But this idea of, uh, Rick, thanks for joining us. I really appreciate it very much. And so um, the, the idea that we, we live in a world of uncertainty, with the future is always uncertain and you have to have faith. I think this is a great time to talk about our faith as Catholics, right? And how that comes into play in business every single day with every single decision, where you're, you're making decisions based on your rules for life, right? Your virtue, your, your habits, your motivational drives, your walk with Christ. And so that's the thrust of the, the module eleven is we're covering these kind of ideas with the goal of helping a, a, a virtuous business leader make decisions every single day, right? And so the Stockdale paradox is one of those. And I'm curious, like, Kieran, when we talk about confronting brutal facts, I have this question, right? And we've been getting asked a lot about like best practices or what it's like to actually do this in the classroom. And we're getting there, we're getting some of this seed is still very new. Um, but I wonder in when we, like in your classroom or maybe in real life experience, have you had something like this come up here? But what do students say when you want to talk about confronting brutal facts? Or what are the things that you have to face? That you might not want to, but you just must. Have you had any experience with that?
Yeah, no, I think uh, and I am more elementary, but kids can be very brutally honest with that. So you're, you hear a lot from um students like their, their comparison is their normal, right? So what they would come home with that. And sometimes um they think that that's normal. And that's where uh it's, it's really um good for a, an instructor to know uh where their students are coming from. And one thing we did was actually went and visited all of our, our students in our homes. And that was a very informative as a, a middle school teacher, actually in the living rooms of the homes. And I remember it's like, no wonder you can't do my homework. There's seven people living in this house and it's a three-bedroom home uh with uh, it made a, I really think that expectations you give and and what they then bring too. But then all with the able to, to talk about some of that, maybe some of that adversity or or all those more difficult questions. Um, and, and even that concept of what's normal um to be, so the brutal facts is, is and and not to be shy from them to say that we're, we're going to talk about some, some things and some things you may agree or not agree with and, and well, let's, let's bring that out. But also to always in the, in the spirit of, of empathy and compassion and letting people to hear um different sides and different, different thoughts.
Wow. I, man, I, I put myself in your shoes there for a second. And and um, what I know is that it, it is, it's very hard for students. Like, there's consistent homelessness, there's consistent hunger, there is consistent um, you know, kids in foster, foster care that, that live out of a, a black trash bag, right? Like, that sleep in offices and and then they go to school and we expect them to, you know, to listen and learn and and hold still when they're starving or they haven't slept. I mean, that's when I become Johnny Beast is when I haven't slept and when I'm starving. So like, how do we get them into this different mode? That would be a definitely a confronting brutal facts. And if you as a teacher encounter this, then hearken back to module four, this is just a design challenge, right? If the, whatever the brutal facts are, those are the brackets of your design challenge. This, it has to live inside of here. And what do you need to do? Um, I know that a large, a lot of charter schools out there in Arizona, they, they don't have these rules about not eating in the classroom, right? They actually feed the children whenever they're hungry. And they know that that leads to better engagement, it leads to better outcomes, it leads to just a better culture, right? Like, we have, like, when I grew up, it was like, no, you can't eat here and you can't wear a hat, you can't chew gum. You know, you can't have your, and of course, back then we didn't have it, but you can't have your cellphone. Like, this is about the culture, right? So, you know, maybe this is just our way to kind of recognize and design, design and incorporate it into the design of the classroom. So that's fantastic, Kieran. Um, and thank you for that. Like, what, what do we think kids will say? Well, we'll hope they're being honest because that's part of the brutal facts, you know, facing brutal facts is, is, it just takes honesty. Um, and so when we do an element two, we move into this audit, right? And one of the things that we, we want to remind you of and go back to the summary that's available from good to great is that you want to lead with questions, not with answers. And I think this is great to come on the backs of module ten where they did the hundred questions in preparing for their interview. But in general, I, I like to challenge myself with ask a question instead of making a statement. And it took me probably, you know, thirty-five years to get to this mode where like, if I wanted to seem smart, then I needed to say something smart, right? If I wanted to seem intelligent or like I belong, then I need to say something that triggers, that signals that I'm intelligent and I belong. Would most of the time, the best thing to do that and also really move the needle forward and help face, you know, confront brutal facts or to move the strategy is to have a question. Uh, having a question is way more valuable than having the right answer, um, in my opinion, right? So we talk about lead, lead with questions, not with answers. And then specifically in the lesson plan, it calls out, conduct autopsies without blame and use them to learn. So here we go again, using all this macabre language, right? An autopsy, if you know what that is, if your students know what that is, maybe don't say autopsy, right? Maybe that's a catch, a gotcha right there. It's like, you don't have to refer to it as an autopsy. It, we used to call them after-action reviews, right? Or a post-mortem is maybe same thing, uh, post-mortem of the project. But after-action review, I, I kind of like that because it, it's actually like, we had an event, we had a training, we had a groundwork session. You know, we go over the after-action review. At the end, it's a way to be intentional about it. Uh, and so this audit of confronting brutal facts, lead with questions, um, but then do some sort of after-action Um, but then do some sort of after action review. What I love about that is that it presupposes that you've actually tried something. So go back to module seven, like we had an experiment, right? We developed a falsifiable hypothesis and we did a thing, an experiment to test it and we learned this. That is technically a postmortem and autopsy and after action review. Uh, and that's how you advance the learning. That's how you touchstone on, we did a thing intentionally. And here's what we tried to accomplish. Here's what's happened and how are we going to go forward in the future? So I love that. Um, and at the very end of block two, we put them back into their journaling mode, right? So if you're using journaling, just 10 minutes on an essential hope or step in their Odyssey project and have them write down as many questions as they can think of. It's like a question storming, right? Um, what I love about that is it focuses on the hope. So that unwavering faith can also be translated as hope. So have them, after confronting all these brutal facts, have them do this, this process of writing down about hope and how they're going to move forward on their Odyssey project, um, through the process of inquiry, basically. And, and that's, that's, I think, uh, inquiry. That sounds like a pedagogy word, right?
Absolutely. That's great. I, I like the word autopsy. I mean, that's a good one. I don't.
You would.
But with that too, so I'm going to put in here, I just say link to, uh, essential questions. We talked about that and I'll share just in this, in this module specifically to, or in this, um, go back here to the block with that and has that essential question at the start. So you'll see that there's some essential questions. If you're using that, that is a way, whether it's a, an objective or a learning target or an essential question, it's really just orientating the focus of the lessons for the student. Cause if you go off tangents with that and be able to see, one, that you want the students to really leave with for that. And so instead of that sage on the stage, sometimes teachers, we get into that, um, frame, that essential question really helps ground and comes back to what you're doing. And for these two elements, especially, I don't want to say the idea of an autopsy or with that as a way of explaining the part, but that's, it's a, that is in itself is a scaffold and the best scaffold and just good teaching is this notion of teach, model, fade. So as you are, as you are doing something, if it's something, a, a task that is a, a larger task to, that needs some scaffold to get over a large wall, oh, the best teaching is teach, teach it. Meaning give an example where you'd give the example all the way through, um, exactly what you want, all the way from how it was started, the middle and even the completion of what you want done. And then slowly fade away, do another example where maybe you get input from the class or someone from the group sharing the example. And then that teach model and then that fade. So that second one is model where you're modeling it along the way, just putting some extra guardrails, really demonstrating. And then that final fade away where you're, you're leaving it to the student to do the learning and do the thinking on their own. And so, so these two elements and throughout the, all of the blocks in that, so, uh, if, if you're teaching, if you're a homeschool parent, or if you are a, just an educator or at, in a classroom setting, that how, how am I teach modeling and fading to the students and doing it in that order? And especially when you get those empty looks or those blank stares, all those, all those, uh, no questions to be asked. It's like, oh, I didn't, I didn't teach that properly, um, with that, that should come to mind. And so that you're quite right to stop, repeat, go back and teach again, all that.
That would be also an example of a brutal fact to confront as an educator, as a facilitator of learning, right? Like, oh.
What did I do to not cause interaction? Yep. Absolutely.
Yeah. The crickets are a dead giveaway. And I think, um, partly why the challenge for me oftentimes is to ask a question, right? That helps me to stay grounded, like what is the essential question here? Um, and have I, have I asked a question or have I just been making a bunch of statements that really aren't helping anybody? Because the learning happens inside the student, right? That's where it actually happens, not from me teaching or talking, it's them doing the learning. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Kieran. So now we're finishing up, right? Module 11 is only three blocks, only three blocks, six total elements, pretty straightforward. And I think in terms of the context of where it lives in the seed program as a whole, it's module 11. So it's the second to last content module. Module 12 is basically delivering the modest Odyssey project, uh, presentation and the moral compass, which is essentially a portfolio of all the work that they've done with a few added, uh, elements, uh, that are in it. And then they write their, um, their wise send off and then they're done, right? You have some sort of graduation. Uh, so the module 12 groundwork session will be interesting. We'll talk a lot about the capstone deliverables for the most part. But here in module 11, it feels like to me like module one through three, we're in the discernment phase. Module four through 10, we're in what we call the, the create phase where we're learning about different ways to be in co-creation with the Holy Spirit, whether it's design thinking or growing in virtue or working on a business model canvas or using the startup methodology or leading ourselves first or learning to tell narrative stories or module 10, uh, learning about the purpose of work. But module 11 is to me the nudge, right? It's the tipping point. It is how we take all of that and we elevate it to that next level, right? So that, that level five leadership where we're looking for the, the precipice, right? The human excellence, right? Uh, and that's something that's, I think, um, hard for a lot of people, especially for young people, because they feel like everybody's telling them what to do. And so a lot of the times they're just, they can rebel. And so it's actually on us as individuals to, to seek human excellence, right? So as we're going through there, we're, we're, we're showing them different ways of doing entrepreneurship, of designing, of thinking about other people, living at our mission of, of loving God and loving our neighbor. But how do we do that consistently, right? And I, and I love this because to me, one way to do that consistently is to think about the hedgehog concept. So in there, um, in module three block or block three of module 11, element one is we're talking about the hedgehog concept. So we actually use a handout that is included in the material. And I'm going to share this really quick, um, because it, it's a way for your students to, uh, you, you basically use it as a graphic organizer. A hedgehog concept is essentially a, uh, a Venn diagram, right? But then we use in particular, we want them to go through this worksheet. Let me zoom out a little bit here. So you can see the whole thing, right? But it's, it's the, it's the Venn diagram exploded and they can, uh, they answer these prompts, right? As with true answers, with as many, as many true answers. So what we're trying to do here is get as many answers out as we can. So we've had some questioning and developed some questions, but we want to talk, we just kind of want to exhaust these. So it's almost like a, a free writing brainstorming thing. Um, what are you deeply passionate about? And I'm sure there's, there's more than one thing. Students, uh, especially have access with the internet, they can see all kinds of stuff. So they might be passionate about a lot of things. And then what can you be best at in, best in the world at? Now that's a little bit different. Um, and I think it'd be interesting to see what students write here. Of course, we can then talk about humility as part of being a level five leader, having that, that, um, professional will, but also the, the humility, personal humility. So what can you really honestly be the best in the world at? And then what will get you paid? And not that, you know, we can't shy away from this idea that profit is actually how we flourish, how we reach excellence, how we, um, live indoors, wear clothing, eat food, these sorts of things, right? And it has to pay us more than what we spend. Otherwise we end up, um, you know, then, then some bad things can happen. And then of course you can always surrender to the will of God and that's wonderful. Uh, and that has actually served me in my life. But that, that idea of where these three things meet, the thing you're deeply passionate about, that you can also be best at in the world at and also pays you, creates this economic gain from trade, you might say. And we want the students to exhaust this worksheet. So there, there's a little bit of why that's there, but it comes in after you talk about the hedgehog concept. Um, and there's a video about the beautiful game. That's the one about the, the San Antonio Spurs, I believe. That talk, it's basically, and then there's this wonderful case study about Lego. And I love it because, uh, in that case study, I had no idea that Lego was in trouble. But they started paying really close attention to what was going out the door and they realized they needed to shift. They needed to change their trajectory. They needed to pivot. So if you want to, here is a good place to go back to module three where we play pit and we talk about the four S's framework. Uh, this is also a good way to go, to go back. So that last one is some cost. And so Lego realized, hey, the, the ship is sinking here. We need to try something different. What's actually working? What are, what are sales that we're making? So I won't give it completely away, but it's a great case study. And there's a teacher version and a student version. So one thing that I did want to point out, um, that the teacher version and the student version have different prompts. So in the teacher version, it's actually going to, um, share with you, the facilitator, uh, the learning objectives that you're hoping to cover. So that's very helpful from a pedagogical standpoint. And so you can check yourself, is this actually what we're supposed to be doing? And then your students, we want them to be involved in a discussion in small groups about the Lego case study. So there's some prompts that they're discussing at the bottom of that. So factors that could have been, uh, contributing to Lego's losses. And then what would you be feeling if you were the leader, the CEO who was brought in to fix things? And then what did the fixer CEO do to save Lego? And so it, it's a great way for them to kind of put their entrepreneurial intellectual horsepower to work in, in that pursuit. And then moving down into block three, element two is titled a culture of discipline. And that's where I wanted to go back to that, um, flywheel diagram that's in the summary, the book summary of good to great. And what I noticed was that these are habits. These are absolutely virtues that are grown in a human being every single day, right? That's what makes you go from good to great as a culture, as an individual. And so that these are just habits. And so once again, in the pursuit of discernment, of your vocation of, of entrepreneur, of being an entrepreneur, what it means to be an entrepreneur, such a big piece of that is our daily habits and what we do to reach success. So it's like this, uh, accretion, this accumulation of, of good habits as we go through. Seems like a great place to talk about good teaching habits to me.
Thank you, John. Yes. And so with this last block here, I'm going to just demo all of the concepts that we've kind of discussed earlier with that. So you can see as you come in. So when you look at this as a educator in a classroom setting or a homeschool, you'd come to this block and you could see that essential question, is that what's driving my lesson? That's what I want to focus in on. And then you can see here how we're moving into being able to, um, use multiple ways of teaching through the abuse of a video as well as here then later a, a reading and a written summary together with, uh, what objectives you want to pull out and where they are on Bloom's taxonomy and the, and the lower level objectives first building in. And then to help that throughout this lesson, that you have these scaffolds, as John had mentioned too, in around these case studies. Um, and are you able to then teach, model and fade with this teacher version of the text to be able to really teach, model and fade that, that well with that, if, if that's needed for it, um, with it. And then the students can go in and find, uh, their own example, or you can use this as a bridge over. And similarly here with this culture of discipline, these kind of, and the participatory set, starting with the small task where you write the word discipline on the board, something where all learners can engage in that, um, for that. And that's a, that's a way of encouraging all participation for it. Um, so that once you get that going early on, that that continues into this next unit of work that they were able to draw on, on that early learning or activating prior knowledge to be able to then continue and get to the more robust part of the lessons. With again, the several examples where you're able to pull those examples and, and teach, model and fade how you would like to do that. And so that's the lens that you should be coming in as someone preparing this lesson as a way of being able to pull out, um, those ways of, um, pulling out, um, how you can use this block and, um, each part of the element of the block to meet and depending on the length of time you have, the class period you may have, or the number of students may vary. Um, you're able to edit and modify that. And that's again, one of the beauties of the seed program and the layout of blocks and elements to be able to customize it based on the, um, uh, based on who you are teaching and, uh, always serving the student. Oh, you're not, you're not, we can't hear you, John.
Yeah, my mute. Thank you. Thank you, Kieran. I noticed that, uh, in the lesson guide, it's not like, it, it says in there, this is where they create their rules for life, but it's not very bolded. So maybe I'm, I'm going to take a note and maybe just go in there and kind of differentiate that. Like this is where the project deliverable happens. Boom. That might be helpful. Um, but thanks again. And what I also noticed in there is like the hearkening back to module five in there. And then also the rules don't have, can be both positive and negative. I think that's helpful. Um, and one, there is one supplemental block from our good friends and partners over at Youth Entrepreneurs that is offered as part of the lesson, uh, lesson guide itself. So if you're interested, it's called the three-legged stool. And I will never forget Matt Silverthorne, who was the original Y E teacher that started it way back in 1991 at North High School in Wichita, Kansas. He loves the three-legged stool, loves it. And I, and like, he would have this diagram up in his room. And when he would talk, I mean, when, he was fantastic teachers. He is still a fantastic teacher. He just is now retired and works for Youth Entrepreneurs. This idea of, and to me, once again, this is about creating culture. And whether you're intentional or not, by the way, you're creating culture. So if you're intentionally creating culture, the three-legged stool says you need three things, basically. And, and they, they don't all, um, come first, like they all just have to, you have to work on them all at the same time. Um, you have to have raving fan customers. Now these are people that are like, this is amazing, whatever it is, right? This product or service is amazing. Where has it been? I can't, I gotta have more. This changed my life. You know, the, the, like, it's almost like, if you want to go to the gospels, it's the woman at the well who met Jesus and they had a little exchange that was a little bit tense. And then she had this epiphanic moment and she saw him for who he was and immediately she had to go and tell everybody. I don't know if you've been watching the, the show, The Chosen. She's a pivotal character in there and, and she's the one, like, she's basically the first evangelist of Jesus, right? She's got to go tell everybody. That's what a raving fan customer is. They just can't help but tell everybody how good, whatever it is that you're selling is, because it was so good, it changed their life and it stands out from all of the other alternates that, that's a raving fan customer. And then gung ho employees. Now that comes from, I think from World War II or maybe the Korean War, this is a military idea to be gung ho. But essentially this is that can-do attitude, right? That, that unwavering faith paired with the discipline, paired with the, uh, the, the, the need to just do the work and get it done. And believing that your, uh, what it is that you're selling, what, what it is your company is providing to the customer, this is necessary. And without you being involved, it wouldn't get done. So that's really a, a cool thing. And so those two things come together. And then of course, the third thing of the stool is just that brutal, confronting that brutal fact that you, you've got to cover your costs and what it's going to cost in the future and enough for your employees and yourself to live indoors, eat food, you know, wear clothing, that sort of thing. Um, so profit, right? It has to create enough profit and reward to keep the company going, to, to provide, uh, rewards for the owners and the gung ho employees and provide a quality product or service that keeps the raving fan customers. So this is like a flywheel, uh, the three-legged stool. The link in the lesson plan goes directly to yacademy.com and you'll find a couple of different documents that support it there. And of course you could always reach out to them. They would love to help you through it as well. Uh, you can actually ask for Matt Silverthorne specifically, if you're interested, tell them Johnny B sent you. And I'm sure he'd take great care of you. So the, the, the last piece of the lesson for module 11 is we go back to journaling, right? So this is after they've turned in their project. Then we want them to have a project reflection, but we want to do it in the context of a couple of lines from the catechism of the Catholic Church. Um, and I wanted to just really quickly, I, I think this is beautiful. So if you go to the catechism from 2012 to 2016, or 2012 to 2016, uh, 2012 to 2016, the, the opening is just beautiful. It says, we know that in everything, God works for good with those who love him. For those whom he foreknew, he also predestined to be conformed to the image of his son in order that he might be the firstborn among many brethren. And those whom he predestined, he also called, and those whom he called, he also justified. And those whom he justified, he also glorified. That opening line, we know that in everything, God works for good with those who love him. So back to this idea of like, how do I determine God's will for me? Does it involve sin? If not, St. Francis de Sales says, it's God's will for you. So there's a couple of prompts in there that you can share with your students. What are the peril? What are the parallels between being called to holiness and the concept of good to great? It seems fairly self-evident, right? But it has this excellent, this idea of, of habit, of having virtuous habit, of discipline, of seeking excellence, of being willing to have faith in what you're doing, um, that you are doing God's work perhaps, like that would be a bold faith. How would you, and then it says, how would you describe this? How would they describe spiritual battle in light of their experience confronting brutal facts? You know, things like the devil's always trying to get you, right? They're always trying to, to keep you down. The devil doesn't have to convince you of his lies. He just has to get you to doubt the truth. Right? And the, the most importantly, the truth about you and who made you and you are in whose likeness and image, right? Who, whose, uh, image you bear. Then there's another prompt reflecting on their hedgehog and their rules to live by that they have committed to. Will they truly help them grow in union with God? Why or why not? And if there's a why not, then why did we choose them? So maybe it's time to go back and to check in with those rules that they wrote, right? And then, uh, maybe, uh, do it again. Kieran, would you, would you suggest that maybe?
No, exactly right. And that's, that's, that point of this journal is, is do this as a formative assessment that are they able to articulate in their own words, concepts that they, uh, wanted to, that you wanted them to learn in the blocks or the elements above? And that's, and if, if, uh, you're seeing some misunderstandings in those journals, that's what an assessment, formative assessment does. It gives you an opportunity to go back and reteach with that too. So, um, a lot of times that, that when you do an exam or something, that's like, if you see that the students just didn't get it, that, that you, that's the whole point of taking these formative assessments is that they're informing you. Do they have it? If they didn't grasp it, definitely there, go back. And that's together with that and the way of, uh, that's where I'm, I'm a big believer in the weighting of grades. And that's where if you're using this journal in the form of that formative assessment, that you, you grade it in that way and be able to then also allow free attempts at those formative assessments with that. And then the summative assessment is that final assessment where you are, um, really saying that based on all of these other formative assessments that I've done throughout these modules and, or even these series of modules, in this case in seed, the fourteen modules. I'm now feel that they're ready to go ahead and do these major assignments on their own, Odyssey project with that for it. And then that becomes what that summative grade, uh, that forty percent of the final grade, if you were to use this, uh, waiting, way of waiting for that. But, um, that's great.
That's so helpful, Kieran, to think about, you know, if you've got twenty-five kids in a classroom and they're all turning in a journal, that's a lot of reading for you, right? But one of the things that I've definitely taken away from, from going through this process and working with you is that, you know, if you don't read them, why would they write them, right? Like, that's like the ultimate kind of indignity for a student is if you give them an assignment and then don't go check in on it, then they're going to ask themselves, why did I do this in the first place? So it's a ton of work and that's why we love teachers because it's, it's, uh, it's really no summers off and it's like eighty hours minimum per ye, per week. Um, so thank you, shout out to all of our facilitators out there that are committed and facing, confronting the brutal fact that you got to read those journals because that's how the kids let you know. Um, and then hopefully, I mean, it might be a little bit of a pucker up if you're looking at module eleven of twelve total and you find out you might have to go back and reteach. Well, do the best you can, obviously, you know, offer it up. And then hopefully you get to do it again in another session and just make a note for yourself to, to do better next time, right? That's all we can really do. Okay. Well, this has been, as always, a pleasure and this has been module eleven, Good to Great of the Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience. My name is John Bakura. I'm the director of the seed program and with me is my colleague, Kieran Roach of the Catholic University of America in Tucson. From the bottom of our hearts, we say thank you and we'll see you next time.